Which is Spanish, one nation, honor God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Good afternoon, everyone. We will begin with the introduction of the Airport Authority Board members by our county clerk, Stephanie Braun.
I'm reading chair, vice chair, and commissioners. I'd like to start by introducing our Airport Authority members. We have five members and our, the chair of the authority will be the chair of our board's appointment, and then we had two additional appointments made by the Board of Commissioners, and the last two were nominees from the Henry County delegation, which our board appointed at that time. So first is Dr. Shatiqua Hamilton, which is Chair Harrell's appointment, and John Means.
Could you guys stand and she call your name so that we can make sure that we recognize?
Art Christian. Kyle Pope. And Brandon Hutchinson.
Okay, thank you all for joining us this afternoon. I also want to make note that Commissioner Johnny Wilson is with us virtually. Commissioner Wilson, are you there?
Yes, ma'am, I'm on the phone.
Okay, alright, okay, alright, if you all can, can be seated, thank you. So we're going to begin our presentation. The legislation presentation regarding the airport, we have our county attorney Nancy Rowan to please come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, members of the Airport Authority Board. I'm here to speak with you today about the, just a brief overview of House Bill 784, which is the legislation that establishes the Airport Authority. I'm one of many speakers today, so there'll be some information that I give you that other presenters will go through in more detail. First, I just want to start off why there is an Airport Authority, the purpose of the Airport Authority. So there's projected growth in commercial and private air traffic in Henry County, and as a result, the Henry County Airport Authority was established. In the overall job of the Henry County Airport Authority would be to develop adequate airport facilities, eliminate airport hazards, and raise capital for the airport facilities. As Miss, as Stephanie just went over, there are five members of the board, one member of the board is appointed based on the list of the delegation by the House of Representatives. There was one member that was appointed based on the delegation lists by the state house senators of Henry County. Two members are appointed by the Board of Commissioners, and one member is appointed by the Chair of the Board of Commissioners. The term of members for the Henry County Authority Board is four years. The Board of Commissioners, they may vary from the four years for the initial term to stagger the years of appointment, and whether that occurs or not, or what have you, the, we will notify you if the board decides to do that. The members of the Airport Authority, you serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. So although you have a four-year term, if two-thirds of the Board of Commissioners vote to remove a member with or without cause, that member will be removed from the Airport Authority Board. So just for some of the qualifications, four of the five members of the board must reside in Henry County. You all must be over the age of 21. You cannot have a felony conviction, and if you have a conflict of interest between your membership on the authority or your personal or professional business interests, you must disclose that conflict with the, to the Airport Authority. So if you have any, you want to disclose that now. The board will have, well, four positions, the chairperson, the vice chairperson, the secretary, and the treasurer. The chairperson of the Henry County Airport Authority Board shall be the appointed person, excuse me, the person appointed by the Chair. So if someone was appointed by, whoever was appointed by Chair Harrell will be the chairperson of the Henry County Airport Authority. The vice chair will be elected by majority vote by the members of the authority, so, and the secretary shall be elected by the majority vote by the members of the authority. So the secretary may also serve as the treasurer, or you can have a separate treasurer. So you can have three-position chairperson, vice chairperson, secretary, and that secretary also operates as the treasurer, or you can have a chairperson, a vice chairperson, a secretary, and a treasurer. The treasurer would also have to be elected by a majority of the board. So as to appointed positions on the board, that includes the vice chair, the secretary, and the treasurer, the terms of those positions are for two years, so the initial position will end on April of 2024. So there are a lot of powers that the Henry County Airport Authority Board has, and before I go over the powers that we have, and I'm not going to go over all of the powers that are set out in the legislation, I'm just going to go over some of them so that you can know what you can do. So, but before I start, I want to make clear that Henry County retains ownership of the airport that's operated by the authority, and Henry County still has the authority to operate the airport projects or to issue revenue bonds, which basically means the Henry County Board of Commissioners still has authority over things that occur at the airport. So that being said, the, again, you all have a lot of powers. The chairperson can purchase and contract on behalf of the authority on items approved by a quorum of three or more of the members of the authority. You can acquire, purchase, lease, and dispose of real property and personal property. You can request that Henry County exercise the power of eminent domain to acquire private real property or any rights or interests, which is basically known as a condemnation. You can appoint, select, and employ officers, agents, and employees, including airport manager, operating staff, engineering, architectural, and construction experts and attorneys. You can accept loans and grant some money of materials or property of any kind from the US government or federal agency. You can also accept loans and grants of money or materials or property of any kind from the state of Georgia of any of its agencies. You can determine the, you can determine what usage may be made of airport properties, project, or facilities. You can exercise each and every power that any county could exercise under the law. You can borrow money for any of its corporate purposes and to issue negotiable revenue bonds. And you can do all things necessary or convenient to carry out the powers expressly given in this act. So one of the things, one of the powers that they mentioned is you will have the power to issue revenue bonds, and someone is going to talk to you about that later, revenue bonds and trusts and that kind of stuff like that, which is why I'm skipping out over that part of the legislation. Last, and I think this is one of the most important things which authority members want to know, is what kind of immunities do you have from lawsuits? So in the legislation, it sets out that the authority has the same immunity and exemptions from liability towards negligence as the county. Officers, agents, and employees of the authority and performance of your duties has the same immunity and exemptions from liability from torts and negligence as the state of Georgia. So not to say you will never be sued, but the good thing is you do have the immunities that the county has the same immunities that the state, which means you have those immunities against lawsuits also. So that being said, I'm going to turn over to the next presenter unless anyone has any questions.
Do you have questions, Selena?
Okay. Thank you. If we could have our county manager Sherri Matthews and David Smith, our financial service director, to come and talk a little bit about roles and responsibilities.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm actually going to be turning it over to Mr. Benjamin Brooks, who's our bond counsel with Smith, Gremble, and Russell. And then following his presentation, you'll hear from Mr. Courtney Rogers from Davenport Financing. Mr. Brooks will speak to the roles and responsibilities within his presentation.
Mr. Brooks?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, my name is Benjamin Brooks. I'm a partner with the law firm of Smith, Gambrell, and Russell, and we've had the pleasure of serving as the county's bond counsel for, for many years. So I'll be talking a little bit about roles and responsibilities today, as well as some bond financing matters and basics. So let's see if I can get the presentation.
Jamie, I'm coming.
Okay. I appreciate it. There we go. Okay. I think that I'll start. I've got my duties and responsibilities last, but let's, let's start with that. Ms. Rowan, I think, gave a, a good introduction to the, to the legislation that created the authority, and so we'll talk very briefly about some of the main duties and responsibilities that you have. One of the things to, to talk about up front is, as Ms. Rowan mentioned, you do have the ability to hire different professionals and others to help you in your duties. And I'm not, I'm not running for this work, but I, I do think it's important that one of the first things that the board does is hire counsel to assist you in your, in the startup of the authority and getting it operational. In particular, you know, the legislation mentions the, the fact that the airport will continue to be owned by the county and will be leased to the Airport Authority. So that is going to be an important legal document for the Airport Authority to review carefully and to have competent counsel assist them with that, as well as establishing your bylaws and your internal procedures for your, for the working of, of the authority. So I think those are, those are two things off the bat as housekeeping that are very important. So I'll talk briefly about the sources of your duties and responsibilities, training, ethics, and open meetings. This will be, as I say, just touching on some high points. The sources of your duties and responsibilities, of course, while you are created, while the Airport Authority has its own legislation, of course, it's subject to the Georgia Constitution and other general Georgia law, as well as the authorizing legislation that Ms. Rowan just reviewed with you. Those are the sources of, of law that govern how you act and how you behave, as well as your bylaws, once those are, are established. That will govern the workings of the authority. One thing that's very important is that under Georgia law, as a result of being appointed to this board, you will be required to complete at least eight hours of training within the first 12 years, 12 months, I'm sorry, of your service on the board. There are different training programs around the state, which you can look into. The Carl Vinson Institute has programs, and there are other programs that, that will, will go more in-depth on the topics that I'm just going to touch on today. This is not going to be that eight hours of training for today. So that is a requirement under, under Georgia law. Ms. Rowan also mentioned conflicts of interest. This is an important topic for, for you as members of the board individually. Under, under Georgia law, by serving on this board, you are required, I'm not going to read all of these, but you're required to be mindful of conflicts that you might have in your personal and business lives as you serve on this board. In particular, let's look at the last one there in the list. Never take any official action with regard to any matter under circumstances in which he or she knows or should know that he or she has a direct or indirect monetary interest in the subject matter of such matter or in the outcome of such official action. So as you serve on the board, you may have matters come before you in which you know the parties involved. There may be private parties or companies involved with which you have business dealings or other relationships. In all cases, those should be disclosed to your counsel, and there are ways that those conflicts can be dealt with and worked around, mainly by recusing yourself from any discussion around those items and not voting on anything that you might have a conflict in. But if, if you have the slightest question about any matter that comes before you, it's another reason why your counsel is important to you, because they can help guide you in, in navigating any conflicts of interest that you might have.
Mr. Brooks, I'm sorry. Could you make sure that you speak into the mic, because we do have a commissioner that's on the phone, that you're not, you're not projecting, so we want to make sure that he can hear the entire presentation.
Will do.
Okay.
I apologize. All right. Conflicts of interest. Another topic to be mindful of is open meetings. A meeting is, is broader than what you might ordinarily think. A meeting is a gathering of a quorum of the members of the authority. Does that work? Is that better? I'm not, I'm not hearing it.
I'm not hearing it either.
It's very, very soft. Is that working? Is this better or worse?
That's worse.
That's worse to me as well. All right, we'll continue. Thank you. All right, a meeting is broader than what you might think of. The meetings, your official meetings that you have, those are easily identified as a meeting, which is subject to the rules around open meetings. The challenge with, with meetings is that they can, you, you might have a meeting inadvertently when, when you don't intend to have a meeting, because a meeting is any gathering of a quorum of the members of the authority. So for, for your board, that, that would be, I guess it's a six-member board, five-member board, six. So four, four of you getting together and talking about any kind of official business may constitute a meeting of the authority, which would be subject to open meetings. So you need to be mindful of that outside of your normal meeting schedule. There are exceptions to that for inspecting physical facilities or attending trainings or seminars or other meetings, so long as you don't conduct any official business at those meetings, and so long as you're not trying to evade the open meetings requirements by, by going to a seminar together. If you have a meeting, that meeting must be open to the public. All votes must be taken in public. Recording of your meetings is permitted by the public. And only, your meetings can be closed for only certain specific matters, and that's called executive session. A meeting can go into executive session for, for certain specific things, attorney-client matters, real estate matters, employee matters, and other, other things. But again, your counsel can, can assist with what is appropriate to discuss in executive session. Executive session is closed to the public. It's not recorded by the public. Depending on the type of meeting, there are different notice requirements. Your regular meeting schedule should be posted as required by law. You can have special-called meetings with 24 hours' notice to, to the paper, and in certain emergency situations, you can even have meetings on less than 24 hours' notice. But again, those are special and unusual circumstances that would give rise to that. Telephonic participation. In an emergency situation, during COVID, many of the authorities and boards around the state declared emergencies and, and were able to hold meetings by, by Zoom or other electronic means. Those have largely ended at this point, and so the, the next one may be more useful. If you have, if there's a quorum of the authority members in, present in person, then a member can join and participate telephonically for reasons of health or absence from the jurisdiction. So if you're sick or out of town, you can do that, but no more than two times per year, unless there are certain exceptions to that. So that, that can be useful to, to participate in those circumstances. Okay, so those are some, again, some very basic rules and things to be mindful of in your duties generally. Now, let's talk about, let's talk about financing and bond matters. Again, I'm going to run through this quickly. Borrowing under Georgia law can be done only in certain authorized ways under statute. Here are five ways in which, for example, Henry County borrows. They can issue general obligation bonds, they can issue sploost bonds, they can do lease purchase, revenue bonds, and authority and similar revenue bonds. We're going to focus mostly on that last one, since that's what, what you're doing. But a, a county has a variety of ways in which it can finance and borrow to fund important capital projects across the county. General obligations represent the full faith and credit of the county and are backed by taxes. They require a voter referendum. So Henry County has used all of these methods in the past. They have issued bonds backed by sploost or T-sploost. They have used lease purchase financing, which is sort of annually renewable financing for their capital projects. They have the power to issue revenue bonds for certain revenue-producing facilities that are listed there. And finally, and this is where we'll spend most of our time, authority and similar revenue bonds. So an authority like the Airport Authority may have power, under your governing legislation, to issue revenue bonds for, for local government projects. And then the county and the appropriate authority together can engage in, in an indirect financing, which is sometimes called a contract revenue bond. The Georgia Constitution allows an authority like the Airport Authority and the county to enter into a contract that facilitates this type of financing. The contract can provide that the county will, well, will provide that the authority will issue bonds, and the county will essentially agree to make the payments on those bonds with its full faith and credit. So those bonds, and we'll talk more about those later on, but those bonds are very favored in the market because investors in those bonds look at them as being backed by the county itself. So that is a, a, a type of financing that the authority will have the ability to do. You have to have the proper powers for the project that you're, that you're engaging in. So let's talk just briefly about how authorities are created in Georgia. They can be created, well, they could be created prior to 1983 by constitutional amendment, by general statute, or by local law. The Airport Authority is a local law authority, meaning that it doesn't have statewide powers. It has powers only within Henry County. Ms. Rowan talked about a, a number of the powers of the authority, to enter contracts, to acquire leased property, to sell property, to issue debt, and to pledge revenues and property for the repayment of that debt. So I wanted to just outline the specific, some of the key powers of the Airport Authority in your legislation, and those are that the authority can undertake projects, which can be for the acquisition, construction, equipping, maintenance, and operation of an airport. And the definition of an airport is very broad in the statute. It includes any area of land or structure which, which is or has been used, or which the authority may plan to use for the landing and taking off of commercial, private, military aircraft, including helicopters, and for related facilities. So it's very broad, anything to do with the airport, the authority has been given broad powers with regard to the development of the airport. Now, as the authority only has power to issue revenue bonds, meaning the authority does not have taxing power or other ways in which it can pay back. You have to pay back your bonds through revenues, which can include revenues from the project, and can also include payments made by Henry, Henry County under an intergovernmental contract. So that is the way in which the bonds issued by the authority would be secured. A brief, I'm just going to mention, i- if you get involved in a bond financing, some of the key documents that you might see, that would include a bond resolution indenture, intergovernmental contract, bond purchase agreement, offering and disclosure documents, and a tax certificate. Bond resolution is the document, and it may be an indenture as well, but that includes really the, the terms of the debt and the, and the parameters of, of the debt, how payments get made, defaults, remedies for that, and provide security for, for the bonds. So that's a key document. The intergovernmental contract, we've talked about in one of these financings, that would be the agreement with the county by which each party agrees to undertake certain actions and facilities, and the county will agree to, to make payments on those bonds. A bond purchase agreement, if your bonds are being sold publicly, and we'll talk more about, about that, there may be a bond purchase agreement with the purchaser of the bonds. If the bonds are sold publicly, again, there would be a disclosure document that, that outlines all of the risks of investing in those particular bonds that, that's sent out into the market so they can evaluate the risk of the investment. The bonds issued by the authority can be qualified as, as exempt from federal taxes, and so there's often a tax certificate that establishes that, and that's my, my job as, as bond counsel, when I serve as bond counsel, to make sure that those, that the bonds meet those requirements. Finally, revenue bonds issued by the Airport Authority would be required to be validated under Georgia law. All revenue bonds go through a process of validation that involves filing the validation action with the local superior court. It's, it identifies all of the details of the bonds, and the court sets a hearing at which anyone can show up and talk about and has the right to intervene or complain about the bonds, or whatever they want to say at that hearing. After that hearing, the court can issue a validation order, which validates the bonds and protects them from further, from any future challenge. So as, as an authority and as, as counsel, we like the validation process because it gives us certainty. Anyone who, who has an issue with the bonds has to sort of speak now or forever hold their peace. After the validation, the bonds are, are good. So any bonds issued by the authority will have to go through that process. So that's the end of my presentation. I understand we're holding questions to the end, and I'll be happy to answer any that you have. Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commissions. Great to see you all again, and for some of you, I'm new to you all. My name is Courtney Rogers, and I'm with Davenport and Company. My partner Doug Gephardt is here as well. We are the financial advisors for the county. And, welcome to you all, and thanks for your time, because I know this will take some time, and we appreciate you all serving. I'm going to try to bridge a gap between, before I get started in my presentation, between the financing side that I'm going to talk about in a moment and the legal side and a couple of things that Ben mentioned. And one is about revenue bonds, and there are two kinds of revenue bonds. One is what Ben went into in some good detail, intergovernmental contract revenue bonds, and that is where the county or this commission would basically back bonds that could be issued by the airport authority. There's also, I'll use the term pure revenue bonds, and what I mean by that is that revenues that are created from this airport authority would pay back the bonds after paying operating expenses. They could issue those bonds without your consent, but that would be their credit, essentially. And, for a startup, it's going to be difficult to do because they don't really have a lot of revenues. So, as we talk about capital projects and financing here in a moment, one of the things to keep in mind is whether or not you, the commissioners, are going to be willing to back some of the projects that this authority might want to do, and that obviously will come up on a project-by-project basis. What I'm going to do is kind of walk you through capital financing for airport authorities and talk a little bit about how we might go about actually borrowing money. Let's see. There we go. So, the first thing I'll mention, and this is really more for the airport authority here, is there's, I'm going to, we're going to give you books when we're done here, so you can take this link, you don't have to write it down, but this link is a, takes you to a guide that is on the GDOT website, that really goes in great detail about how you might finance projects. And so I'm going to try to hit some of the high points here, but it does go into some great detail that I think you're going to want to look at. Depending upon the type of project, there might be quite a bit of support from the federal government or the state government, or you may have to end up going out on your own and 100% financing. Federal funds for public airports are provided from the Federal Airport and Airway Trust Fund, which basically is supported by excess tax, excise tax revenues on aviation system users. Some of those federal projects, if they qualify, are provided at 90% cost from the federal government. In other words, the federal government will pay 90% of the funding of that capital project. And if it meets those guidelines, generally, GDOT, through their programs, will also support another 5%, which basically means that you have to produce the final 5% for those types of projects. The state funding comes from a division of GDOT through the Georgia Airport Aid Program. And some of those highlights include, to be eligible for state funding assistance, you've got to be in compliance with several things, and that's why it's going to be important to look at this guide. There are things such as submissions that have to be completed to the state agency, including a five-year capital improvement plan, that is something you'll have to keep up, otherwise you're not going to qualify. Projects that may not be federal, may not meet certain federal guidelines, may meet state guidelines that could be eligible for up to 75% state assistance. Applications are basically due by November of 30th for the following state fiscal year. And there's a number of prioritizations that you'll see in this guide, but first and foremost is safety, and that's one of the things that they look for. Non-eligible projects, as I mentioned earlier, will basically have to come and be funded 100% by the airport authority. And that's where, kind of go back to my opening remarks, depending upon the project and depending upon how many dollars you need, whether or not you have the revenues to support, if you have to go out and borrow for this, either you can, if you can support it 100%, we can figure out a way to find a creditor who will lend us that money based on your credit, that's one option. The other option would be to come back and ask for county support or backing for that funding. One of the questions you might ask is, do you need a bond rating? And the answer is, not necessarily. Again, it's going to depend upon the project, it's going to depend upon the size, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that here in a moment. Could that revenue bond affect the county's bond rating? Well, it's possible. It's possible if the county were giving its backing, and depending upon the size and other things the county might be doing. There's a couple of different ways, if you came to us and said, hey, we need to borrow some money, and we'll say, well, there's two different ways we can go about doing that. One is, we use the term direct bank loan, it's basically banks or financing institutions that may purchase the loan and hold it themselves. The other option would be to do a public market issuance, and I want to talk a little bit about the differences between those two. This chart kind of outlines a lot of those differences, and the primary differences include credit ratings. For a direct bank loan, it's not necessary. For a public market issuance, it would be. For a direct bank loan, you wouldn't need an offering statement, you don't need to put together a prospectus, if you will, but we would if we were doing a public market sale. In the case of a direct bank loan, there's usually a single purchaser, the financing institution. For a public market issuance, it's going to be multiple issuers or buyers. The timing flexibility, for a direct bank loan, it's generally 30 to 45 days, we can do that pretty quickly, working around meeting dates and whatnot. For public market issuance, we're talking about 60 to 90 days, a little bit longer process. The interest rates for a direct bank loan, it's going to be like your mortgage, it's going to be one interest rate for the entire loan. For a public market issuance, there's going to be multiple interest rates at various points along the yield curve and maturities. Structuring flexibility, what I mean by that is being able to repay it, do we need to pay principal immediately, or can we do interest-only? With the direct bank loan, it's a little flexibility, but we have complete flexibility in the public market issuance. What's the final maturity, what's our limitations there? The banks generally are at 20 years, sometimes they won't even give us a fixed rate for 20 years, they may say, we'll give you a fixed rate for 10 years, let you amortize it over 20 years, and you have to reset it at year 10. For a public market issuance, we can go all the way up to 30 years with a fixed rate. But then the last thing is prepayment. If I want, if all of a sudden you came into some dollars and wanted to prepay the loan, it's a lot more flexible with a direct bank loan, the banks generally give us more flexibility, and that varies with market conditions. In a public market issuance, it's generally a 10-year, where you're locked out, and you're not going to be able to call it early without some type of penalty. So you might say, well, how do we decide which way to go? And that's part of our job, is to tell you what we're seeing out in the marketplace. There's a lot of different pieces that go into it, and I've listed a number here to go through a few of them, whether or not you have a bond rating, that could make a difference. What's the security going to be? Are we doing the intergovernmental contract revenue bond, that's going to have the backing of the commissioners, or is it going to be a pure revenue, as I mentioned earlier? Size, in terms of, if it was a very large size, which I wouldn't anticipate coming out of the gate, but if you did have a very large size, the banks generally are not going to be a player up to a certain point, because the smaller banks in particular are not going to be able to participate, and we have a limited number of larger banks out there. So typically, a larger issuance is going to take us to the public market. The amortization period is going to make a difference. As I mentioned earlier, some banks don't like to go out too far, they may not let you go out 30 years. If it's a project that you think has an average life that's going to last you more than 30 years, then a public issuance might be the way to go. Mentioned redemption provisions, depending upon whether we need to have something that we can call early or not, could make a difference. The timing of the borrowing, how quickly do we need to get there is another thing that might enter into our conversation. If public sale is one of the ways that we're going to go, there are two kinds of public sales. One is to put it out for competitive bid, where essentially we pick a date and time, and we put it out there for anyone to bid on it. The other option might be a negotiated sale, where we actually hire an underwriter ahead of time to take them out and take us out into the marketplace. And there are various reasons that you might go one way or the other. Some of the mechanics for a public sale is that we're going to need a bond rating. We don't, while there used to be non-rated bonds out there in our market today, everyone's looking for a bond rating. We would basically sell the bonds based on that rating, we would need to do a public offering, and those interest rates would basically vary depending from year one to year 20 or 30, depending upon how far out we're going. To give you a sense of what's out there right now, where are we interest rate-wise? We sold bonds yesterday for a water and sewer utility with a AA+ credit, and they had a 4.25% all-in for 30 years. So, interest rates aren't bad, while you hear rates are high, the front end of the yield curve is high, but the back end is pretty flat right now. So, interest rates are not bad for 30-year bonds. For a 20-year bond, we may be in the 375 category, give or take. In terms of the repayment structure, again, as I mentioned, you know, we may not have revenue stream that may start, let's say, 24 months later, but we need to get into the financing now, we might be able to do some interest-only, or one of the things that we're able to do, depending upon certain IRS rules, is borrow to pay the interest until the revenue stream begins. So we might be able to borrow a little extra, that will pay the interest up until the point that the revenue stream begins. So, we do have a little bit of flexibility there. The bank loan mechanics, the direct bank loan, generally what we do is we put together requests for proposals. Essentially, we'll lay out what we're trying to do, explain the credit, we send it out, we have a very large list of lenders that are interested in this type of, these types of financings, and we send it out, and generally we'll get back, while we may send it out to 50 different entities, we may get back anywhere from five to 10 responses. And so we'll go through those responses, we're looking at the various options that they may give us in that response. The one thing that's a benefit here is that you have the benefit of knowing what the options are before you decide whether you want to do that or not. In other words, you'll know what the interest rates, the terms and conditions are, whereas with a public sale, you give us permission based up to a not-to-exceed borrowing amount and interest rate that we go out and secure the financing for you. Here, you actually can know with certainty what the terms are going to be before you just vote to move forward or not. Kind of the steps, we listed the one for a public sale, a bank loan's going to be very similar. We start out basically evaluating the financing itself in terms of which way do we want to go, in terms of credit, things like that. We'll finalize that, come back to present that to the board, to you all, in terms of what the plan is. We get permission to move forward, we put a schedule together. In the public realm, we'll be putting together a preliminary official statement, we'll be working on credit presentations. Ben mentioned the validation. Sometimes we validate before the sale, sometimes we'll do it afterwards. In this case, we've got it set up ahead of the sale, we actually go out and have the bonds validated before we sell them. We meet with the rating agencies, get the ratings back, actually go out and actually have the bond sale. And what, the one key is that we would have the bond sale on a day that you're meeting, that both, if the credit is also being backed by the commissioners, then they would also meet on the same day. And essentially, we would get your, get, ratify basically the results of the bond sale on that same day that we actually hold the sale. And then roughly a couple of weeks later, the legal councils would have all the documents pulled together, and we would close on the loan. So again, kind of the typical timeline, as I mentioned, generally 30 to 45 days for a direct bank loan, 60 to 90 days for a public sale, kind of moving along those, that timeline that I just talked about. So with that, Madam Chair, happy to answer questions, and I know those questions could come for us, or could come for any of the presenters have talked so far. Thank you.
If you could just give me a moment. Sherri, do we have airport staff here?
Yes, ma'am. Lynn is here from the airport.
Okay. I would like for Lynn to come forward and talk about what her role is and her staff that she has at the airport, and, because she pretty much operates the day-to-day, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Good afternoon, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I have been the airport director for the last five-plus years. Currently, we have one full-time person who is a line service person. We recently had two people, one person retire and one person resigned to move on to, they're going to become a pilot, so we were happy for them. We did refrain from filling those positions, so the airport authority will be able to make those choices. And in the meantime, we do have a individual serving light duty who has, is answering phones, greeting people, so there's always someone there to make sure that's being handled. And we also recently have another person that is filling in, assisting with grounds maintenance and that type of work. And that's our staff.
Okay. So, Sherri, I have a question with regards to, Lynn is our airport director, and she runs the day-to-day, just as you are the county manager here at the county. And, I guess where I'm, I guess kind of need some clarity, is that, does the authority hire personnel, or would she be able to hire her own personnel? Because they're not, they're running the day-to-day. And I just, I don't know if we need to, I just want to try to get some clarity as to, will she still have the authority to do what she needs to do far as hiring her personnel, or is this something that the board, this particular board has to do? Because I would hate to see a board have to make personnel decisions.
Absolutely, and that was one of the things that I actually underlined in one of the presentations, I'm not sure if it was the attorney or Mr. Brooks, in terms of the hiring and retaining of staff. So currently, as it's written, the airport director reports to the county manager, and that would still be the same structure. But there has been some conversations amongst current commissioners and previous commissioners about us actually allowing, creating the airport authority, and then allowing a management group to actually come in and manage the airport, who has the airport experience. Not to say that Lynn doesn't have the airport experience, but we've had a management company before come in and actually manage the airport, identify what our critical needs are, and how we can make sure that we're taking our airport to that next level. The way that this is written, Lynn would still report to the county manager, and would still hire, fire, and retain her employees. That is not something that we would be asking the airport authority to do. Ideally, I see their role as looking at our CIP, which has been approved by the Board of Commissioners, making sure that those projects are being funded, implemented, and then looking to develop an overall airport master plan, and looking at retaining, at some future date, a management company to actually come in and manage the airport.
So what would be the difference in a management company managing the airport and Lynn's day-to-day? I mean, what, how, those lines are very close.
So, what Lynn has not shared with the board is not only is she the airport manager, she's over all of our capital projects, she is the SPOLOST Capital Project Director, and one person cannot do it all. And so Lynn has been told over and over and over again that we're going to have to do something, she is very, she does an excellent job in everything that she does. And what I don't want is for Lynn to get burnt out as an employee managing the day-to-day operations of the airport. She's also going to be overseeing our new judicial complex, the public safety facility, the aquatic center. And so, if there are avenues and resources available where a company can actually come in and manage the airport, then that's certainly something that I will be asking this board to consider. With all things being considered, this board has to authorize that, because that would be some form of a management agreement between the county and whomever is selected to manage the airport. So that is certainly something that I will have lots of conversations with you all about. One of the other things that we've talked about internally, if we are to move towards a management company, I want to make sure that the employees that are currently employed there would be retained within that management company, so no one's going to lose their job, we're not going to do away with those positions, and that's another reason why we have held off on filling those positions, just to get some better direction from the board. If you all say, look, we don't want a, we don't want a management company to come in, county manager, hire us an airport manager, then that is something that I'll have to come back to this board, and ask Lynn if she'd prefer to manage the airport or manage all the capital projects. And I think, just looking at emails from commissioners, she does an amazing job managing our capital projects that are happening here in the county.
So if we were to, if we were to hire a management company, wouldn't that be the decision of the airport authority?
That would be correct. So the airport authority-
So it's not our decision.
So the board, I believe, should make those recommendations to the airport authority, because, and Nancy will have to correct me, but I do believe the airport authority, in my read, they are allowed to execute contractual agreements as the authority, and so that would be a role of the airport authority. So, thank you.
Yeah, so their role would be to hire a management company if that, if the airport authority board decided to move in that direction?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so, the revenues that are generated by the airport- Okay. And so, the revenues that are generated by the airport, since we have the airport authority board, those revenues are generated, where are those revenues housed, and will they be still housed in accounts that we oversee?
They have to, because the airport is considered a special revenue account. So, it's like an enterprise fund. So, those funds would not go back into general fund, they would have to stay within the airport.
Okay. And so, then the other question that I have is, do the airport authority have to follow our procurement guidelines? And so, when you talk about putting things out for bid and so on and so forth, will they be up under the county's procurement policy?
If it relates to federal and state grant reimbursement, they would have to follow those procurement guidelines.
Okay. And if they do not, if, if, if there are, I guess, other procurement options?
I would, and I'll defer to the county attorney, but I do believe that they would still be bound by our county procurement processes. And please correct me, Ms. Ruin, if I've misspoken.
And I need to look at this in more detail, so what have you, because they are able to set out certain purchasing conditions, but the purchasing conditions set out by most counties or municipalities are somewhat required by state law. So, usually, you have to do some type of bidding of some sort. We do piggybacking, which is allowed, that kind of stuff like that. So, I just need to look at it, but I do think they would probably be, they would probably, if they are not following the county's actual purchasing process, it would be something that is very much similar to what the county currently does.
And so, it, but that is only, that's not tending to state and federal procurement policies, because those are already guided by how they're guided.
Right. So, usually typically, and I think what Sherri and Lynn are referring to, like if you get a federal grant of some sort, the federal grant will usually require that you actually utilize the county's purchasing process in order to retain services. It's the same thing with the state grants. Typically, they will require that the, like, I think the best examples was the sheriff's department. So, although the sheriff's office, so although the sheriff is a constitutional officer, and he can purchase things on his own, if he gets a federal state grant, the federal state grant will require him to use, go through the actual county's process in order to retain services. And I believe the authority would have to do the same. And I think that, and correct me, Sherri, if that's not what you're referring to.
Yes. And I think one of the other things to remember, Chair Harrell, is the county is still the direct recipient of all of our federal funds that come through GDOT and through the federal agencies. So, Lynn and her group would still follow those processes. The authority is going to be looking at those bigger projects that may not either be identified in our capital improvement plan, or things that may have come from a plan in which we have not identified a funding source. And this board has shared with that authority, there's a desire for us to proceed with X, Y, and Z. The best example I can give is our relationship with the Development Authority. They operate as a separate authority, but this board has had several conversations with our Development Authority in terms of what they like to see at and around the airport. And so, Mr. Finn and his group, they're out now pursuing and talking to individuals about what can, what they can do to enhance the airport. So, I think a lot of your question, Chair, is going to be just open communication with the authority. I think their role today, or at least in the next 30 to 60 days, is one, just to get their hands on the capital improvement plan that's already been approved, sit down with Lynn, go over that plan, make sure that we're on schedule, that we're keeping those projects moving. And then, I'm hopeful that the authority will schedule some meetings with the board to hear from you all on whether you want them to pursue having a consultant to come in, or hiring someone to actually come in and manage the airport. But I don't think that they're going to go out today and decide, "Hey, look, we're going to hire a team to come in," because I think they do need to sit down with our staff to see what we've identified as some priorities. And if there are projects that we need to get done, that we don't have the funding to get those projects completed.
And, and that's what I, I just want to make sure, is that, you know, coming on as a new board, that they do get with staff, that they do get with our procurement, and get with Lynn specifically, and just kind of learn a little bit about the airport first before making any major decisions. And will we, will each of the board members get email addresses that are related to their role as a board member?
Yes. We can, what we typically do for a number of our board members is we will assign them a county email address. And correct me if I'm wrong, Nancy, are their emails also subject to open records?
Yes, they're going to be subject to the Open Records Act also. And I think one of the things that Mr. Brooks brought up during his presentation is that some point the county and the authority will need to do some type of IGA regarding how they're funded, what the county is willing to do. Because right now, although they are an authority, they're not an authority that necessarily has a budget. So, we would have to kind of work those things out with the authority. So, even if they wanted to hire staff right now, they don't have any ability to do so.
So, this is the kickoff, and then there's many more conversations that we'll have to have. And what I will do is make sure that we're providing updates back to the board as the authority convenes.
Okay. I'm going to give, the next item on the agenda is to allow the board members to come up and ask some questions. But I want to start down at the end. Commissioner Wilson, do you have any questions?
No, just, uh-
Okay. Commissioner Robinson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I did have, my concern is with her being, doing several jobs, do we have someone within that we can probably train instead of branching out in the management company? Is there someone within the organization now that Lynn can recommend for us promoting someone within, already within Henry County?
I will say this, not that I am aware of. I have not had an employee who has expressed an interest over managing the airport. And it is a very, very specific experience is required to manage the airport. It's not just the day-to-day. There's a lot of reporting that has to occur. There is a lot of grants that we're responsible for. Even fueling an airplane is not as simple as pulling up at the gas pumps, fueling your own vehicle. And so, I would rather keep Lynn in that position until such time that we decide to do something else. And then, if the board decides, "Hey, look, this," or the authority decides, "We don't want to go in a management company direction," we can always post a position and then allow individuals to submit their resumes, for us to look and make sure that we're really getting someone that understands airporting. I will tell you, Lynn transitioned over from SPOS, and she learned it on her own. She literally learned it on her own. But Lynn is like that special jewel. She's one of those employees that you give her something, and she's going to figure out how to do it, how to make it work. She's turned the airport around, she's identified revenue sources that we weren't tapping into, and has really done an amazing job. And does not, she has not come to me and said, "Hey, I want to step out of this role," but I realize the talents that she has. And because we have so many projects that are getting ready to hit the harper, or at least for us to move on, we've got to come up with a Plan B for her. I'm not saying it needs to happen tomorrow or next week, but I will tell you, in January, we have quite a few projects that are going to be in some very major phases. And I'm going to need 125% of what she's already given for those projects. So, it sounds like what I'm hearing from the board, maybe let's hold off on a management company, and I will make sure that whenever the authority meets, that my staff is there as well to express any concerns or issues that the board may have. But again, we just want to make sure that we keep it moving in the direction that Lynn has set forth, because we have a premier airport. And I think, Chair Harrell, I think you may have been instrumental in securing some funding for us for the airport, along with other members of the board. We have hangars that are getting ready to be under construction. And so, Lynn's got to focus on that, in addition to a new rec center in District Two, new park in District Four, so many other projects that are going on. And I just don't want things to fall by the wayside, because she is being pulled in multiple directions.
I just want to be clear in my question, because just like with Lynn, she started out in one position. I just don't want to overlook someone else that has come into the county, that probably still has those qualifications as well. So, just putting it out there within is basically my point. So, if that can happen at some point, that would be great.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I'm not opposed to a management company coming in, so please, not all, all board members.
Okay. Thank you.
So, 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 let's get that very clear. Okay. Commissioner Angler?
I just want to tell thank you to the new board for willing to serve and willing to step up, and that goes to each and every one. I know some of y'all very well, some of y'all I don't know at all, look forward to meeting y'all. So, thank you for your commitment to the airport authority. I think it's our golden goose moving forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Lewis?
Good afternoon. Once again, I'd want to say thank you as well to everyone who has stepped up to be on the board. This is not a, it's not a paid position. And I actually have more of a comment as opposed to any questions. And my comments go towards our taxpayers, our citizens who are actually looking at this meeting, trying to figure out why in the world does Henry County need an airport authority. There probably are a lot of citizens in this county who don't even realize we have an airport in Henry County. This is, this is huge for us. This will allow us to maximize the potential that we have for the airport. We need to focus our attention on making sure that we're maximizing not only the airport, we're maximizing the Atlanta Motor Speedway. This is a route for economic expansion in the western part of the county that is highly underutilized at this time. This is an, an attempt for us to make sure that we lower the tax burden for taxpayers. So, I want people to understand that, you know, this is one of the reasons why we're actually going to an airport authority. So, I'm holding up hardly behind this. Once again, thank you to all the board members who have volunteered to serve.
Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Chair Harrell. Is my mic on? Okay. I really don't have any particular questions, but I do need some clarification sent to us, and I hope to receive it in writing, because I heard too many suggestions about "I think, I think, I think should be, I think, I think should be." And we need to erase that. The procurement process, we need to have clarity on it. Because we contrast state, we contrasted with federal, but we didn't know exactly how it'd be done for local, small businesses and local dollars. But we contrast other things that we are comfortable talking about, but those guidelines are already set, state and federal, those other dollars or not. So, I want to know what that procurement process will be, how would they also infuse using local community businesses and small businesses in that whole process. The hiring process that was mentioned, we do have some great employees here, some that I definitely respect so very much. We need to know in writing how that hiring process would take place, the report system, the very same way we have a graphic picture of how our staff is set up. I would like to receive that in writing, and not "I think, I think, I think," like we talked about today. Another thing that was mentioned about the funding that received by the airport and the funding that we may have to support, I would like to see us put that in some formalized document from today's discussion for upcoming meetings, so we can determine how that will be again. So, we want to start going back to this tape and looking at it, and say, "Well, no, I said, I thought, this is what I thought, this is what I meant." So, let's follow up on those things as well, so we can have this in writing, to know exactly what it is that we are trying to get accomplished here. I do want to thank the individuals who are volunteering by appointment to work in this capacity. We look forward to a wonderful airport coming out of this. We look forward to something great. I do have to stop and thank Lynn for the work that she has done. She is amazing. I'm certainly hope that her talents would be maximized by this board, because she is absolutely amazing, and not be overlooked the fact that what she brought to this county, really by herself without a board. She did it. And she did it along with other tasks that were before her. So, those are some of the things that I would like to see us do, to make sure that we all have a clear understanding. Because based upon some of the things that were read today by our attorney, I don't think we do. I'm looking at what she read and what was stated. There are some gaps there that really do need to be clarified.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, staff just made me aware that they will be bound by the purchasing policy, because they have to be audited. And so, they will be bound by the county's purchasing and procurement policy. But I will still provide in writing to Commissioner Thomas the questions that I'm able to respond to, and will defer to the county attorney for the remaining questions.
Okay. And if we could get this presentation that's here, Stephanie, can we get this presentation not only sent to us, but also sent to the new, our new Airport Authority board members? And, you know, I would challenge the new board members to just make sure that you all set some time aside to, whether you do it collectively or individually, set the time aside to get with our procurement and our purchasing. And Sherri, I don't know if you can make sure that they have copies of what our policies are, and to look at preparing a budget for how they're going to move forward. So, at this particular time, I would just like to ask the board members, starting with the chair, Dr. Hamilton, to come forward, introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about what you do, and if you
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners, Henry County. I am Dr. Shatiqua Hamilton. I am a resident of Henry County. I'm a mom of two daughters and a wife. I do a bunch in the county. I have an aviation program here, so I am a pilot, so I do know airport operations and things of that nature. But my company here is Aviation Discoveries. It's something that's true and dear to my heart. I expose or just show children about the different careers in aviation, something that I was never exposed to as a child, so that's something that I give back to. I also have another business here. I'm so grateful to be here and to be a part of this new Airport Authority. I look forward to working with everyone, as well as you all. I don't have any questions at this time. Thanks so much.
Okay. Thank you. If we could have Mr. Means come forward and introduce yourself?
Good afternoon, everyone. I am John Means. I am a 28-year resident of Henry County. Been living here and enjoying it for quite some time. I, as a, I'm also just finishing up a contract with Jackson Municipal Airport Authority, where I've served as the CEO of that airport authority. I am a AAE certified member of AAAE, which is the primary authority and airport leaders to run airports in the country. Pretty astute on airport design as a civil engineer. I could design most airports and the safety requirements according to FAA's restrictions. And I enjoy the business. I've been doing this for a while, and what I would say is, this is a great opportunity to do it in my backyard. I was also an employee at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport for eight years as their director of facilities, both landside and airside. And they continue to be the busiest airport in the world for the last 30-plus years. It's a great place to do business.
You have any questions of us, Mr. Means? Are you good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Next, if we could have Mr. Brendan Hutchison come up and introduce himself.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I think we found our vice chair. You know, I'm also a 28-year resident of Henry County, have seen this county grow so much, have worked in Henry- so much, have worked in Henry County for 28 years at Atlanta Motor Speedway. I am currently the executive vice president and general manager of Atlanta Motor Speedway, have three boys, a beautiful wife, I have raised a family in this county. Um, it's exciting to be a part of this board and to see how we can grow and how we can better, uh, establish business on the west side of, of Henry County. Sure enough, um, the first thing that came to mind when I was looking through these presentations was that emoji with the wide eyes and kind of the, ooh. And as I, I heard the two previous board members talk, uh, I already feel a little bit better about, uh, the knowledge that we have on the board. I can tell you I'm a learner, I like to read, I like to research, I like to figure things out, um, and I think that those strengths will help this board as we move forward. Um, going through the presentations, I probably have about 15 questions already written down, um, but hearing again from the, the two that spoke before me, I'll hold off on my questions and, uh, we can have a couple of meetings maybe, and I can get those, those questions answered before I, I come to you guys with some more answers. So, thank you very much, look forward to, uh, serving the county well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we will have Mr. Art Christian.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. My name is Art Christian, and I am a 20-year resident of Henry County. Formerly, my wife and our daughter, uh, lived in the city of Stockbridge, we're now in unincorporated Henry County. My background is in managing, uh, state, federal, and local grants and dollars to fund housing, community, and economic development, uh, programs, uh, from small businesses to individual homeowners, for example. Look forward to the opportunity to work to help bring more economic development to, uh, Henry County, especially in and around on the west side. There's a lot of opportunity, a lot of land, and a lot of interest. The housing and the movement to the, to the west side is huge, and it'll be great to, you know, corral that energy and propel it even forward with the help of the board. I currently don't have any questions, but, uh, I look forward to, uh, working with my colleagues. Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, Mr. Kyle Pope.
Good afternoon, Kyle Pope, and thank you for the opportunity first and foremost, and, uh, very impressive group that y'all have put together, very, very excited to work with them. Um, born and raised here, uh, been in Henry County my entire life, my wife's been here her entire life, our families probably go back to the pre-1900s, uh, this is all we know, you know, outside of a brief four-year vacation in Athens, Georgia, this is, uh, this is home to us, uh. Um, you know, the airport authorities, uh, it's, it's pretty exciting, you know, when I first was approached by Dee and several others, I was a little curious about where it was heading, uh, it's untapped potential, and it's, uh, you certainly understand why y'all have put this board together, uh, from a financial standpoint, but, um, looking forward to it, no, uh, no major questions that add the time, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Stephanie, is there anything else that we need to do from this standpoint? The one thing that I would like to say is, welcome to the board, we look forward, it looks like you all have a lot of vast experience, whether it's in aviation, whether it's in grant management, whether it's in, in, in business. Um, I think that we have a well-put-together, um, airport authority that, and you all will complement each other. Um, my vision for the airport is for us to become a regional airport at some point in time, and, um, I know that with you all's skills and capability, I can envision you getting us there. Um, Stephanie, is, is anything else that we need to do from this standpoint, or are we good?
We have the election of the officers, and they had asked to, um, wait until they had their first meeting together, but I think per the legislation that if a full board is here, that they need to do it at their first meeting, um, which would be this meeting.
So, um, you all saw the presentation earlier where you need at minimum a vice president and a secretary and treasurer, so, um, uh, Madam Chair, I will allow for you to, I guess, call for a motion, um, or a nomination for, uh, board member.
Should we, should we have an opportunity to discuss specifically to see if their strengths or weaknesses that, that may benefit somebody being in a specific role?
I'm just wondering what the legislation says. Uh, would you all like to take a break and maybe go and meet in the, in our executive board, uh, room? We could do that.
So, Madam Chair, they can do that.
Oh, they cannot do that?
But we can take a recess.
Can we take a recess?
Right, and I just want to make clear, if this is, number one, if this is just a special meeting called by the Henry County Board of Commissioners in order to present this information, then this would not be their quote-unquote "initial" meeting. However, if it's a meeting of the Board of Commissioners and it's their first initial meeting, then they would need to elect off, officers now, but if it's just a, a Henry County Board of Commissioners meeting, and I just want clarification, uh, in order for it to be informative or what have you, it's a Board of Commissioners meeting, then you would not have to appoint officers at this time. So, just wanted to make that clear.
Well, it was advertised as a joint meeting, so I don't know, you tell me what that means.
Well, if it's a joint meeting, then yes, we do, we can give them a recess and, uh, reconvene to let them elect someone.
Okay, so we will take a 10-minute recess. Okay, Chair Hamilton, I'm going to turn it over to you.
I would like to, can you hear me? Is that on? Okay. I would like to make a motion to appoint John Means as vice chair. Could I motion a second?
So, you got a motion, can we get a second?
Yes.
Got a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Congratulations, John Means. Congratulations, John Means. Uh, could I, I would like to get a motion to appoint Art Christian as Treasurer. Could I get a second? Or I would like to motion a second?
Second.
Motion a second?
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to appoint Kyle Pope as Secretary. I would like to motion a second?
Second.
All in favor? We have a board with...
Okay, so will you, um, just announce the board again for us, please? So, um, that the county clerk can make sure that she gets all of the information?
Okay. The new Henry County Airport Authority has a board with John Means as Vice Chair, Art Christian as Treasurer, and Kyle Pope as Secretary.
Thank you. Congratulations. Well, welcome aboard all. I think that they wanted to get a picture of us. Uh, so the me, do I need to adjourn the meeting and then you can do the pictures?
If you'd like to adjourn first, that would be great.
Okay. All right. So meetings adjourned.